Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting of November 28, 2022. I would ask that you all rise for the singing of our National Anthem. [Music] Tenille towns for the singing of our National Anthem. I don't know those of you who may have missed it. Tenille was featured in a Hallmark movie recently, so it was her first acting debut where she was singing and I saw a little snippet of it, she was acting as well. So she continues to climb within her industry and represent her hometown. So congrats to her. And looking, moving on to the adoption of today's previous council meeting, councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I move the council adopt the minutes of the City Council meeting held November 14, 2022 as presented.
Perfect. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I will call the question.
O'Connor in favor?
That carries unanimously. Moving on to item number four, the adoption of today's agenda, councillor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council adopt the agenda as presented.
That motion is in order. Not aware of any additions or omissions, so I'll call the question. Please vote.
O'Connor in favor?
Sorry about that. That motion carries unanimously. Give me a second here. Now moving on to delegation portion today, we are no delegations in the chambers and nobody online. Moving on to reports, council representatives on external boards, there is an item of business in your package today, if I could just get council member to bring that forward for discussion. Councillor Blackmore.
Sorry, I'm having mic issues here. Besides this mic. Constant mic issues. So this is really a housekeeping matter, and so I will go ahead and make the motion and council amend the list of council representatives on external boards to delete the alternate appointment for the intermunicipal collaboration committee.
Perfect, thanks. And I'll just give a little bit of background on that. Currently, there are three members on the intermunicipal collaboration committee. The bylaws say that two of three counts for quorum. Traditionally, in many committees, we do have an alternate. However, in this committee, there's not one required. So as councillor Blackmore indicated, this is just some housekeeping. Councillor O'Toole.
I don't think we have to deal with it today, but I did want to bring it up. Community features, the board I sit on, does not, will not require an alternate. You're either there or you're not. And it's for their...
Their bylaws?
Their bylaws.
So I think it's probably prudent to deal with it at the same time unless administration would look to legislative services to see if you'd prefer that to come back. But just give us a moment here, a pause, because if it's not already done, which it may already have been done, if it's not, we could do it at the same time. So just give us a moment here. In the meantime, yep, so that one's already been cleaned up?
Yep.
Okay.
That's why I'm bringing it up, because I wasn't sure if it was. I heard about it before, but I thought I'd bring it up now at this time.
Yep. So that one's been handled, so we're good. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to committee business, item seven in our package, 7.1 today, is council committee the whole from November 15 to 17, which was our budget. And I will look to councillor Bressi for, oh, I apologize councillor Teason, thank you.
Oh, wow. How did he go from there to here, but?
But nobody's in the queue. I'll pick people.
Oh, that's how it works. Oh, good to know. Good to know.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the council community of the whole meeting held November 15 to 17, 2022 as presented. Eighteenth.
Fifteenth.
Eighteenth, yeah. So we'll amend that in our package, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question on adopting the minutes of the council committee, the whole. Please vote. And that motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 7.1.1, the budget, I have councillor Blackmore.
I would move that council approve the 2023 operating in capital budgets, which requires a 1.71 municipal tax rate.
All right. So that's a motion to approve the tax increase of 1.71 percent.
I'm speaking to that.
Go ahead.
This council worked basically four and a half days, almost five days, or three and a half days, almost four days to put this budget together with the help of administration. There was a lot of moving parts, and in the end, we were able to reduce the recommended tax increase from 3% to 1.71. And this remains one of the lowest ones in the province to date. So we're pleased and happy with that. And I would ask council to support this motion.
Perfect. Thanks for that background councillor Blackmore. Comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Moving on to item 7.1.2, councillor Blackmore.
And these motions that follow are all more or less the same. We cannot approve our budget in one fell swoop, so we would approve in principle the 2024 to 2026 operating in capital budgets.
Thank you. That motion's in order. So this is a motion to pass those budgets in principle, knowing that we will come back for consideration and discussion on these years. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Councillor Teason.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Just prior, before any motions are added for the next item, I just had a couple of questions to ask. One, I think can be cleared up fairly easy. It's in regards to a community room rental at the museum on page 57. It's, there's three community rooms that are listed on that. I think the second one has it listed at 791, which is close to a $500 increase. I believe it's just a typo as all the other fees and charges.
Am I just putting the motion on the floor and then we'll discuss the items in the fees, rebates and charges by law?
I just, yeah, I guess I could, but I have three different questions.
Then at least we're in that topic of conversation.
Do you want me to make the motion?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Council give first reading to bylaw C1395J being an amendment to the fees rates and charges by law. And I don't think there's discussion.
So no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call the question. Please vote. Councillor Blackmore. Sorry, that carries unanimously. Councillor Blackmore.
I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C1395J.
Perfect. Now an opportunity for discussion or debate. Councillor Teason's question is out there. Page 50, what did you say, sorry?
I think I got it as 57 in our package. It's under the museum, community room space. I think it's just a typo. All the, all the prices seem to be reduced in our fees, charges, bylaws. That one says 791. I believe if I was reducing it the same amount, it would be 179, but I'm not 100% certain.
Ms. Whiteway? Just need a couple of minutes. All right.
There another one in there that maybe you can be looking into? So there's two other ones. The one, one is just a general question in regards to leisure center soccer pitches. I know that we're getting a lot of emails lately and we're, the planned demolition of that is taking place. I just wondered if we would include it in our fees, rates and charges by law for 2023, if this structure isn't even going to exist.
Mr. Lemieux, do you have a comment on that? The fees are in the current, in the current charges by law? And I'm just wondering.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor. So the plan is for demolition to occur and for that facility to be closed at the end of the year. So if you wanted to remove it, I don't think that's a problem.
Thank you for that. And then the final question that I had, and I think there was a little bit of discussion about this at budget time, just in regards to multiplex aquatics and wellness, pool rental. Just a question in regards to the whole pool, private up to 260 swimmers. The rate right now is set at $333.33, which is a great rate when you consider that it's about $135.33 cheaper than a not-for-profit to rent the pool. So I just wondered if maybe those numbers got mixed up? I'm not sure. I just think it would be weird to give a private group a lower rate than a not-for-profit.
Sure. So just to clarify, there's a conversation on the hourly rate, the, and two other items. What were the other two?
The other ones was the museum community room.
Right.
Which I think is just a typo.
Okay.
It says, labeled at 791. I just want to make sure no one gets an eye-opening charge by accident. And the multiplex whole pool, pool rental in regards to the last item, and I'm on page 28 here of this, private up to 260 swimmers is $333, which is less than the not-for-profit rate. And then the last one is just the leisure center and whether or not it even belongs on our fees, rates and charges.
Okay. Ms. White, wait, do you have, has that been enough time, or would you like us to, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So on the museum, you're absolutely right. It looks like a typo. And I can see that just given that the with GST rate is 187.95 per half day. So we can ensure that that's corrected, even with readings of the bylaw today. When it does come to the leisure center, perhaps we could just leave it on here till it is demolished. If it's demolished, then obviously it becomes a fee that's not applicable. But until then, we could just leave it on the bylaw. And could you just repeat the page number for the third question?
You bet. So it's page 28 of our fees, of the whole package. Page six of our fees, rates and charges by law. And it's under pool rental, under multiplex aquatics and wellness. It's the last line, $333.33 in comparison to the not-for-profit rate of $468.
Page 28, pardon me?
Page 28 of the council package and page six is the fees, rates and charges by law.
Okay, so just, so the private up to 260 swimmers at 333.33, and then you're saying the whole pool not-for, nonprofit being the 468 to the 491?
Yeah. So I guess my question is just why would, like, is, should those numbers be switched? Because I would find it interesting that, that a private group could rent the pool, the whole pool for less than a not-for-profit.
Go ahead, Ms. Whiteway.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. You're, you're absolutely right. I would, and even given what the price was prior to the change, those two will switch those two so that the 333 becomes the nonprofit and the 468 becomes the private up to 260.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So these will be amended. This is second reading. And you're good with the amendment? So it's giving second reading based on the amendment of bylaw? All right. You're good? Okay. All right. Comments or questions on those amendments? If not, we'll vote on second reading. Seeing none, I'll call the question on second reading to bylaw C-1395J as amended. And that carries unanimously. Councillor Blackmore.
I would move that council have third reading of bylaw, which I cannot read, C1395J as amended at this meeting.
That motion is in order, so this motion must pass unanimously in order for us to give third reading here today. I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Councillor Blackmore.
And I would move council give third reading to bylaw C1395J as amended and being an amendment to the fees, rates and charges by law.
Perfect. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item 7.2 under committee business, the Invest GP council, or committee meeting, rather, of November 22, councillor, committee chair, councillor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just make a motion that we adopt the minutes of the Invest GP committee for November 20, 20, November 22, 2022 as presented. A lot of twos there.
That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue with any errors or omissions, I will call the question. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Councillor Black, or Palat, any highlights from your meeting?
Yeah, a couple. We had delegates. We had Brock Mulligan come from the Alberta Forestry Products Association to talk to, which was kind of fitting timing after most of us had done a warehouse or two around their force management plan. So that was a well-timed one. Our CEO, Nicolay, updated us on some things through the economic development. We had 26 new businesses have opened in the city and 10 of those were home base since our last meeting. So that was, that's nice to see that we're going in a, in a good direction on, on new businesses coming to Grand Prairie. We've also released the 15-minute anywhere video for, for Grand Prairie, which is very, I watched it several times this weekend. It's a very well-done video. And it does remind me, as much as we complain sometimes, how it's hard to get around the city, you can pretty much get anywhere in 15 minutes. So it was a great video. And we had a little bit of a verbal update from Joe Johnson, our director of planning and development, just talking about some planning and land use as we're going to be heading into our MDP as well. That's my report.
Perfect. Thanks for that. Moving along to 7.3, the Financial and Administration Services Committee meeting held on November 22. Councillor Blackmore.
I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting held November 22 as presented.
All right. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. You have one item of business, councillor Blackmore.
Yes, we have some motions regarding a tax recovery sale. And the thing about the tax recovery motions that are made at this time of year is by the time they go to actual sale, there's very few, very few properties left on the list. But we're going to start with council approve the following, that the property subject to 2021 tax recovery notification as per the attached appendix C be offered for sale by public auction, and that number two, the auction be held on the first floor of the North Conference Room at City Hall on Friday, March 17, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. And three, that the reserve bids for the 2021 tax recovery sale be set as per attached appendix D.
Perfect. Those motions are in order. Comments or questions from council? Seeing none, I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Councillor Blackmore, any highlights from your meeting?
Yes, we do have a few highlights. As I mentioned earlier, we went through a long budget process, which, you know, I've just managed to close. I've been miked, I can tell. Additionally, administration is now working at updating those budget numbers, which will be posted this month for public viewing. Auditors are also on site, starting to work on the first phase of our interim audit. Procurement and supply is working with city departments to forecast their annual spending for 2023 for the creation of blank, blanket purchase orders. This reduces administrative, administrative tasks throughout the year and is a process we've been using for some time. And a new snow removal app for tracking operational near real-time data and information is now available on the city website. And the city has ranked number 20 for GIS programs in northern, North America in 2022 by Public Sector Digest Research. So out of 97 organizations that they looked at, they're pleased to rank us 20, which I think is quite an honor and a reflection of the hard work of GIS is done in Grand Prairie. And finally, we have some legal and risk management focused efforts are made on the insurance renewal process to make sure we're not overspending on insurance. And that should be targeted by the end of this month, which is in two days. And speaking of interesting things in the city, Grand Prairie had the first city website in the province. Not very many people know that. So we've been like on leading edge of technology for a long time.
That's way before your time, too.
It was, was before my time. It was not before Helen's time.
May she rest in peace. Any, anything further?
That concludes it.
Thank you for that update. Moving on to item 7.4, Operational Services Committee meeting held November 22. Councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I move that council adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee meeting held November 22, 2022 as presented.
Perfect. That motion is in order. Call the question.
Councillor Bosch in favor?
That carries unanimously. Councillor Bosch, some highlights from your meeting, please.
Thank you, yes. As from our chief operating officer, Brian Glavine, commented, commented to us at the committee meeting, energy and environment, very me composting sessions for the schools are now very me-composting sessions for the schools are now complete with nine classrooms, classroom presentations and four classroom kits distributed. So that is great to hear that we're interacting with the schools and focusing on what they're learning a ton about right now, which is energy and environment. Additionally, the city received a grant for $689,000 to implement the residential portion of the Clean Energy Improvement Program and a loan up to 4.4, $1.4 million, we're not put that opposite. Administration is waiting on FCM to sign off on this program and hoping to take on residential applications before the end of the year. As well as preparations are underway for the 2023 construction season. We cut that slightly, so good on us. Better for driving next year. And seasonal overhaul on street sweepers. It seems weird to say that out loud, but here we are, talking about the spring and summer. Transportation, the first round of residential snow clearing is underway. Now, it does feel right to talk about that. And yeah, I have seen like the windrows pretty much all picked up everywhere. So yeah, to date, we're looking pretty good. And then additionally, to date, 25 applications have been received for neighborhood rinks. And is there any more that we've heard of since the committee? No? Okay. But put in your applications. And as far as for parks, the comments and complaints that we've had regarding foxtail in the past this last summer, administration will proceed with an enhanced cooperation between departments to improve response times for dealing with properties that have foxtail concerns. So basically, dealing with the issues proactively instead of reactive. So that is my report.
Perfect, thanks for that. Counselor Bosch, moving on to item 7.5, the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held November 22nd. And I'll look to Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move the council approve the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting minutes from November 20, or sorry, from November 22nd as presented.
Perfect, that motion's in order. I will call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. So you have one item of business, Counselor Bressi.
Thank you. I'd move the council approve funding allocations as presented in appendix A. And just speak to it, I think this is amazing community group funding we get to do mostly for athlete development. And on a personal note, a highlight of a couple times a year is to go visit with Bob Newfeld and share the athletes that got funding in his name. And I think this will probably be the last time I ever get to do that with Bob. So I'm kind of happy that I get to be the one to make this motion.
Excellent, thank you for that. So that motion is in order to recommend the grants as presented in appendix A in front of you, council. I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Bressi, you had a couple highlights from your meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. The first one that I was happy to report is we had a visit from Drive Happiness, which is a nonprofit that's set up in our community to leverage volunteers to provide transportation to seniors and others who need assisted transportation. So what a cool supplement to other things we have in the, have in the community. I was really excited to learn more about them and I hope that they can get more and more traction in our community. And just want to give a special thank you to all the volunteers in our community that are attached to them. A couple of things I want to, two other things I want to highlight is RCMP. We had an interesting report on some success with scrap metal dealers and some of the work being done to make sure the catalytic converters don't go missing in our community. I know that's something that ebbs and flows in our community, but is, there's few more frustrating property crimes than not being able to start your car in the morning and having a couple thousand dollar bill. So glad to see that happening. Also, I want to highlight that there's, I won't read them all, but there's all kinds of special things happening at the Community Knowledge Campus for its anniversary week, just in time for Christmas, just in time to have some fun with your family, getting active in these cold, blustery months. So I'd encourage people to get online and check out their, check out Facebook or the website to see what they can get for specials there. We also talked about e-bike and e-scooter safety, had some surprising conversation about some of the provincial rules around electronic scooters and one-wheels and various things like that. So there's some work yet to come from committee on that. We got to look at injury collision hotspots and traffic counts of 2021 and really happy to see a, it's not nearly as scary a map as it was when we did our, when we did our transportation master plan a few years ago. We really have had big success in that. So I want to give a huge shout out to our engineers, our enforcement folks, our park staff. There's a lot of departments, our corporate communications. There's a lot of departments that have been pulling to make our community safer on our roads. So thank you to everybody for the success in that. The big one for me, though, was we heard about our transit system. We had some significant overhauls of route timing. We had some minor overhauls of where On Demand's going, of where exactly buses are going on the routes and how we're doing turnarounds downtown. And I really think that it's going to be a much better use for our residents who rely on transit to get around. So big thank you to our management for listening to pastors, listening staff, and a huge, huge, huge shout out to our amazing drivers who are continuing to do an excellent job of change management as they're helping their pastors get to work, get to their social commitments, get to their medical commitments.
Great, thanks for that, Counselor Bressi. I had a question in regards to, I don't recall from the meeting, where we'll see this, maybe yourself or Mr. Lemieux can tell council. I thought it was a great item to learn about the fact that Grand Prairie would be highlighted in the sports tourism Canada as a feature, where, as a great place of where to host games and events. And so I wondered, Mr. Lemieux, if maybe, if you could find out where that is, if it's an online thing, just forward it to council, just for information. I'd love to see what the highlight looks like because I truly believe we are one of the best municipalities across Canada to host events and games. So it should be nice to know, please. Thanks for that, Counselor Bressi. Moving on to number eight, there is no item of correspondence, no delegation business, no notices of motion. So we will head into council's recess and we'll be back at 6 o'clock. Thanks so much, everyone.
Good evening and welcome back to the City Council meeting of November 28. This is the evening portion of the meeting, so thank you for joining us. We are going to right, gonna go right into public hearings. And first, under item 14.1, Land Use Bylaw Amendment C-1260-166. I'll call this public hearing to order and look to Ms. Downing for an introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Administration has initiated amendments to the land use bylaw to add office major and office minor to the IG General Industrial District. This amendment was presented to council in April 2020 and defeated at that, at that time. Currently, offices are only allowed in the IG district if they are accessory to an industrial use. One example might be a survey office. The city continues to get requests for these types of, for office uses that don't fit into the definitions in the ID district. And so our analysis of this is that there's no land use compatibility issues or conflicts. It provides opportunities for infill in older industrial areas and opportunities for development on vacant or underutilized land. We did look at the relative relevant statutes, the municipal development plan, for example, and it states one policy of promoting infill development, and there's also policies on promoting downtown for office space and preserving adequate industrial land, as you will have read in the report. So finally, as there are no land use compatibility issues with allowing office in the general industrial district, and it allows opportunities for infill and the ability to develop on vacant or underutilized land, administration recommends that council give three readings to bylaw C-1260-166. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Opportunity for questions for administration, recognizing Council Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for the report. I do have two questions, if I may. The first one was, you mentioned the city continues to get requests for this type of development. Do you have, can you give me an idea of how many requests we're getting? Is it a frequent thing, an occasional thing?
Thank you through the chair. I don't have an exact number on the amount of inquiries, but it, half a dozen or so.
And, and what timeframe ish? And I'm okay with the ish numbers.
I, the timeframe would be since it was last to council in 2020.
Gotcha. If I may, one more. I know that when council talked about this last time, there was conversation around the table about, hey, not opposed to it, but maybe some more consultation, some more strategic conversation has to happen. Did we do, did we do anything with this after council defeated this bylaw the last time, or is this the first time it's being touched again?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you through the chair. Internally, there was some research done and look at other bylaws and other municipalities, and there was no compelling reason to bring something different forward.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm just gonna clarify, Ms. Downing, by something different, you meant different than the original recommendation, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Last week, I think everybody on council received an email around somebody wanting to set up a hair salon in, in that general area, which doesn't fall into that category. By this potential change, would they be allowed to put that hair salon in?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you through the mayor. No, that would be personal care service, so that would still not be allowed in the IG district.
Okay, so could they bring that forward to us at the delegation?
Through the mayor, yes, they could ask, or they could bring an amendment forward to add that as a text amendment to this district as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Blackmore.
So Ms. Downing, you refer to this as infill opportunity. So if I came forward, and I'm not opposed to this, or like this is not my personal opinion, but if I came to planning and said I wanted to build an office building there, would that fall, if we approve this tonight, would that be a legitimate use?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you through the mayor. Yes, that would be a legitimate, legitimate use.
Even though I raised the question, I don't see it really as an issue because people who want an office space in an industrial area typically have very industrial looking clients to start with. It's, it's not really, you know, where you would toodle off, toodle look for, I don't know, any kind of business, right? It's, it would be client specific anyway, so I'm certainly not opposed to this.
Thank you for your comments. Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor. The only question I have is, has the parking been in consideration for an increase in volume?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you through the mayor. The parking is based on the use, so wherever an office is located, the parking requirements would be the same.
So you've looked into the parking side of an office space going in there?
Look on a case-specific basis.
In each case. Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing no further questions for administration, I am going to go to the presentation and submission portion of the public hearing. I'll ask if you're here to speak in support of this bylaw amendment, to please come forward, introduce yourself, and if you would like to come for, come on forward. I will turn your mics on, and just for those who may be watching, if you could have a seat, welcome and introduce yourselves, and take a few minutes to tell us in your opinion why you're in support of this amendment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrie Bealman. This is my partner, Deanna. We have a bookkeeping company, and we actually located into the industrial park a few months ago. I'll give you a bit of the background.
Just pull the mic just a smidge closer to you.
Pardon me?
You can just pull that mic just a bit closer to you. Perfect, thank you. Yep.
We have been operating in Grand Prairie for a few years now, and the business was doing well. And then the COVID shutdown hit, and most of our clients are in the oil and gas industry, and when the gas press, prices tanked, we started losing clients. So we've been struggling as a company for a few years now, and the opportunity came up with a client of ours that we do books for, who has a shop in the industrial park. His offices were being unused, and he said, you can come here if you deal with my walk-ins, answer my phones, I'll give you, like, we're paying next to nothing for rent. So we jumped at it, 'cause for us, it's a savings of probably, you know, about 15,000 a year, enough for us to get a little breathing room and get some client base back. So we moved in, and I didn't realize this was an issue until we went to renew our business license. So we're already there. And it, as far as, you know, parking issues or anything like that, we don't have a steady bunch of people coming in and out. There's already a big private parking lot. We're doing no harm there, and this is benefiting us and him. So I would, I mean, we were given the option of applying for a variance at the tune of $4,000. If we had $4,000, you know, we could probably rent someplace else, but we don't. So it's not really an option for us. I think that if this doesn't pass, we're probably gonna have to shut down. So I'm in favor of this passing, just so that we can stay put where we are. Do you have anything, Deanna?
So opportunity for questions from council for the delegation. Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm just curious, so how much about square footage are you using for your bookkeeping services with on this?
About 900, maybe.
So, and had you looked at other locations around the city before you moved out to that?
They're not gonna let us have a deal like what we're getting.
Okay.
We're just paying a couple hundred bucks a month. I mean, we were renting before all this happened, and...
We've been renting for like 10 years at, we have.
Yes, and...
It's always had our business license and stuff.
Yeah.
And were you, and you were doing it over an office environment for, or from your homes, or what were?
No, no, it was, we rented an office space.
Okay.
Yeah, we've always had an office.
Okay, no, great, thank you.
Counselor Blackmore.
I'm sorry, I missed your names.
I'm Carrie Bealman.
Carrie.
Yeah.
Okay. Would, would it be, am I making a fair assumption in that as a bookkeeping office in the industrial area, that primarily your clients are going to be industrial clients in addition to the trade agreement really you have with your landlord? Okay, thanks.
Yes, yes, they're actually mostly in the oil and gas field. The landlord is actually an HVAC guy with the big shop back there. But, I mean, yeah, I mean, we don't do professionals per se or anything like that.
Thanks, that's all I needed.
I had a question, just to jump in the queue here. I'm curious, would it be fair to assume that if you weren't in a commercial building, such as the one you are now, that you would be working out of your home, and, and therefore potentially not informing the city what you were doing on a regular basis?
Well, actually, we looked at that option. When we were first informed that we couldn't be there, and we have kind of decided that we can't really afford to be leasing a space long-term, we looked at the option of working from home. But, you know, so many of our clients are not very tech savvy, and they're not gonna be happy with the whole remote having to email stuff and that kind of thing. I think we'd lose a lot.
And we have people coming to our homes, too.
Yeah, and you don't want, yeah, you don't want these guys coming to your house, you know? Like, you just don't, right? So I don't think that's a really viable option unless we were to completely shift gears and go for a different type of clientele.
Right. Perfect. Well, I see no one else in the queue, so I thank you for coming tonight, appreciate your time. You betcha. I'll just double check that there's no one here to speak in support of this amendment, and there is no one online, so I'll just ask a third time to be sure that there's no one else here to speak in support of this amendment. I'll ask a second time if there's anybody online or in the council chambers to speak in opposition, to please come forward. And I'll go a third time, just in case there's somebody in the lobby that didn't think to come in when it's their turn. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this amendment? Seeing none of close the public hearing, look to business arising. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-166, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thank you. That motion is in order. No discussion or debate on first reading, so I'll call the question. Please vote. Counselor O'Toole?
Uh, in favor.
Counselor O'Toole votes in favor, and that carries unanimously. Counselor Thiessen?
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-166. I just speaking to this motion, I'm really curious as to how I voted back in the day on, on this one, because it seems like it makes a lot of sense that office spaces can sort of fit into commercial spaces, industrial spaces, and even residential spaces, as some of the conversation has, has come here. What we're really trying to do is fill up a lot of our unused industrial areas, and I, I think we're, we're moving on a good pace. When you got a good landlord and some great tenants and, uh, and a business that fits in the community, uh, I don't think we should inhibit that in any way, shape, or form. And just judging by some of the questions and comments, I feel like this is going to pass, so I'm not going to appeal too much to my council mates, uh, and I'll just encourage to vote for this on second reading.
Thanks for that. Counselor Bressi?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I know how I voted last time. I voted no to this last time. I went back and watched the council meeting, and as a side, it was really fun seeing Counselor Blackburn again.
Yeah.
The motion before this, I, he scolded me for something, for actually I was going to vote, and I changed my mind because of his scolding, and so it was really great to go back and watch. But I know the conversation, uh, the conversation at the time, um, I think a little bit shame on council at the time, although it gave us lots of forgiveness, because it, I think it was the first or second meeting where we went.
Shame on some of you.
Yeah, shame on some of us. No, not shame for how we voted, but we talked a lot of the time, and we wanted to have more conversation about this and do more engagement on it, and we just never actioned that. But again, I think it was our second meeting on Zoom, maybe our first one, and so, um, that's fine. I did vote no, but I think what's different now is, at the time, we had a lot of conversation about how we were nervous that this would discourage investment in our, in our downtown core. And I think the two things that have changed, the one really positive one is we've completed investment in the downtown core. We don't have any big projects going on right now, and I kind of think we're kind of at the point where not as much worry about being protectionist of that. I think we're at a point where we just need to kind of let stuff develop where it develops. But I also think the other thing that's changed is people are a lot more ready to go online now, and I think there's a lot more risk of businesses now saying, oh, if I can't go where I want to go for the rents that I know I can attain somewhere in the city, I just won't get an office anymore. And that wasn't really a risk last time we considered that. So I'm going to be voting yes today, but I still do have concerns about, I'd hate to see ready to develop industrial land that's got road networks, that's got infrastructure that we're probably going to invest in significantly over the next couple of years. We've got millions of dollars of, millions of dollars planned to invest into the Richmond area, and I would hate to see that turn into just commercial office development instead of the industrial that we're, um, that we're investing for. And so I'm a yes today, but I think this is something that council does need to keep its eyes on and make sure that, that lands, that landed, especially in Richmond, is developing the way that we hope it develops. And if it's not, maybe we need to change some of our investment planning in that area. So yes today, but let's keep our eyes on this.
Counselor Blackmore?
I feel, um, that it is reasonable to assume that every type of business out there is going to need a service industry to support them, and the oil and gas industry is certainly going to need a bookkeeping service, and we certainly don't want, uh, the large trucks that they drive and the mud that they pack around, um, to be driven into our downtown core or into our residential area. So it makes absolute sense to me that certain businesses, whether they be service businesses, uh, or whether they actually be, uh, doing something else, have a place in the city where they belong, and I believe industrial services belong in industrial area, so I will be supporting this.
Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much. Counselor Blackmore and I have the same opinion. I think in the future years, you may find office buildings out there with accountants and doctors and stuff like that in there, and, uh, we're just, I just think we need to be forward thinking on this, and I think it'll benefit everybody. So, thank you.
All right. I too will support this. I think that the intent of having integrated services within industrial services is a way for, uh, us to strengthen areas such as the Richmond Industrial Park. I think that, um, you know, I, I, I understand the concern when this came to council previously. However, I think that, uh, ideally, the, the point that Counselor Black, um, Blackburn, Blackmore said, um, was what of utmost importance to me, to have service industry visiting residential neighborhoods or in our downtown core. Integrated services don't work everywhere, and I think they, they work in industrial areas. I think that having the strongest industrial park we can, meaning having service industry with heavy duty industry, having complementary businesses is the way that this should work. And not everybody, if, if you have a, a bookkeeping service that services their, their landlord and three other adjacent businesses, why would they want to be anywhere else? They're right in the core of where their clients are, and, and it's really just strengthening, um, what they're doing, the business they're doing for each other. So as we want to grow our knowledge of our businesses by having our business license program, it's really important for us to keep in regular contact with these businesses. If we start to discourage people from renting, leasing, whatever that looks like, we're going to have more home-based businesses, and then in my opinion, we have an even bigger problem. When we look at services that traditionally should be in office space, and they're running them out of their basement, I don't think that's great for neighborhoods. We already have so many neighborhoods in the community where there is too much street parking, in my opinion, and, and heavy demand on infrastructure that wasn't built for that. So this is built for demand, let's maximize the space as much as possible, so I will too vote for this amendment. With that, uh, Counselor Thiessen to close.
Ooh, well, no need to close. I think, uh, there's been lots of great points raised, uh, throughout the course of this debate, and I think I've already counted all the votes up. I haven't counted one objection yet, so we'll just carry on with the vote.
All right. Seeing that, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Moving on, no delegation business tonight?
No, no, we still have to finish, yeah. Uh, thanks, uh, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council have third reading for bylaw C-1260-166 at this meeting.
So this is a motion to have, to give third reading here tonight. We had, the previous motion was to have third reading. My apologies. So I will call the question on giving third reading to the bylaw amendment.
We just did this.
This is that.
It says, number four says to give. Okay, that was second reading. Now I got it. Thank you. So this motion is to have third reading here tonight, this meeting. It must pass unanimously in order for us to have third reading here tonight. I see no one in the queue, so I'll call the question. That carries unanimously. Counselor Thiessen?
Phew. All right. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-166, an amendment to the land use bylaw.
All right. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. And that carries unanimously. All right, moving on to, um, item number fifteen. No delegation business tonight, so we'll move to council member reports, starting with Counselor Palat.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Outside of budget, which we had the first week, it was a busy, uh, last few weeks for us. Just a couple of events I attended was the, the Maytee flag raising. We had supper with Aka, which I think most of us attended. It was great to do the Warehouser helicopter tour and learn a little bit more about the caribou and how they're affecting, uh, potentially our FMAs for a bunch of our logging industries. Um, I also, uh, spent most of a day in the basement of the library with a, a couple chiefs of staff here, uh, as my first, uh, meeting on the library board to get up to some speed. Um, they had done a report around, uh, Margaret Law Report, which had shown some things that library was doing good and some things that you can improve, so we spent a good day on how we're going to implement the things that need to be improved. Um, also had my first, uh, committee meeting for the ICC, the Interior Collaboration Committee with the county, and, uh, more for me was just getting up to speed, um, on that one, as it was our first COVID. And, uh, lastly, we had, um, I had a Nighthawk Board Meeting. Again, discussing staffing was one of our biggest concerns, um, with the living wage coming out at nineteen forty-five on a hill that's trying to pay minimum wage, they're just having a really tough time getting their rates to work. And so we actually discussed what fees might need to look like, so I apologize if you're seeing your Nighthawk rental, or rates go up sometime in the future, but that might be the reality that they have to face to get bodies out there to put people on the hills. So, um, we'll see how that goes, but I think they're going to look at doing a report of what other hills are charging, and at first glance, it looks like our hill is actually quite low. So it's, it's never fun to see rates go up, but it would maybe, from what I could gather, our rates dropped during COVID pretty substantially to try to make it more affordable for families. They haven't even went back all the way to two thousand nineteen rates yet, so probably something we're going to have to do just to make sure that we can stay in the black out of the hill and attract staff. Um, and that's my report.
All right, just a question for you, Counselor Palat. I know, um, I had, too, had heard that rates were low compared to other hills. Has there been consideration? I know the ski hill has done a couple nights where it's free to ski based on a sponsorship. Has that been discussed for this season, do you know?
Uh, it wasn't discussed, there was sadly the other way, would we just start closing the hill certain nights of the week if we didn't get, uh, enough either utilization or people coming out? Currently, they're making snow. Um, Jonathan explained how they basically were making snow for a few days to get the hill open last weekend. Sorry, I forgot to mention, the hill is open. It opened last weekend. Um, but they were actually using the same people that were making snow some days and then asking them to run an operate lift drop machine, or lift machines, or lift operating the next day. So they're that short of staff right now. So their bigger challenge is really just staff. So they haven't, uh, per to my awareness, someone I can bring back the next council meeting, that wasn't discussed in that one.
Okay. Thanks. Counselor Bressi?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I, I got to attend a, a number of the same events that Counselor Palat highlighted. I also got to go to Edmonton for an Alberta Muni's board meeting, and one thing I want to report is, we did release last week to elected officials, the, uh, local government fiscal framework allocation formula that we believe the province should pursue. I think it's a, I think it's one that's fair and reasonable to all municipalities, and I was, I'm nervous about how mid-sized cities might shake out an LGGF allocation. I think this is one that's fair to mid-sized cities as, as well, so I'd encourage council to learn more about it. I'm happy to, sure, I won't bore you with the details right now, but if anybody wants to know the details of that, ha, more than happy to share it with you and tell you why I think we should be supporting it. The main thing I want to report on, though, is I got to do a police advisory committee with Counselor O'Toole. And for, if council's not aware, I recently lost the position of Chair of that committee, which I think was a very good thing, because Lois Duke is the Chair of that committee now. And now that they've finally got a good Chair, they're doing really good work, I think. It's, I say that tongue in cheek, but, uh, I really am, am happy that Ms. Duke is in, is in there. Uh, we spent a lot of the meeting talking about our police model review. They got input on which community groups should they talk to, make sure that they've got a good subsection of the committee on their engagement list, and just sharing that plan to help get local, on-the-ground context, community context, to make sure that we're talking to the right people in our community, so that, uh, consultation can be very fulsome. We, the committee asked to spend, excuse me, it, it asked, asked a lot of questions about the coordinated care campus and some of the stats of what's going on in that area. We asked administration to come back to our next meeting with two things. One is more crime data on have, have we seen crime rates change in that area, and if so, how have they changed? And we also asked them to come forward with, um, the report we got is that there are challenges in that area, but it's with other hotels, not the hotel that the coordinated care campus is in. So we've also asked them to come to our next meeting with more details about what's going on to do enforcement, enforcement of criminal activity in and around hotels. So I think that'll be, it's a good conversation where hopefully that committee can help our police, um, figure out how to better respond to things in our community. We got a report on a metal strategy, which I, on a catalytic converter strategy, which I mentioned earlier, so I won't go over that now. Last two things I want to highlight to council is, in the next couple of months, we're going to see body cameras on our CMP officers, and we're going to be one of the Alberta pilot communities. And I think that that's, yeah, that PAC team we piloted, that Collage Reporting Center we piloted, it's another example of RCMP piloting things in our community, and I think that says very good things about our council, our administration, our community, that this, this one, they're, they feel safe piloting, so that was good news for me. And the last thing I want to touch on is, um, you might be seeing police advisory committee recommending to council an advocacy priority in the future. And what we learned more about is, for when people are on judicial release for bail, it used to be, there was an opportunity for the police and the prosecutor to appear in front of the justice of the peace and make a case for why this person should remain, remain confined, remain off the streets until a trial happens, and that was done locally. Now what we learned is, that's being done in Edmonton, and it's just looking at paperwork. There's no ability to add any context to make an argument. It's just, somebody in Edmonton is just reviewing paperwork and making decisions. Yeah, so I, Justice of the Peace in Edmonton is just reviewing that, making paperwork, and seems to be causing some real issues. And so we've asked for more information around that. Police Advisory Committee is going to have some more conversation about that at our next meeting, but you might be seeing an advocacy recommendation coming to council out of us. So that's some of the work we've been working on.
Great. Thanks for that. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Uh, let's see, on November fourteenth was a very busy day in County City Hall here. We had a meeting with Alberta Transportation. We also had a meeting with the National Police Federation, uh, meeting with Northwestern Polytech, and council had a mayor one-on-one, and then we had our council meeting. So that was one day. Uh, the fifteenth, we had started our budget, and then after the budget, I went out with my wife to the Northern Spirit Light Show with the draft horses. We had, uh, uh, entertainment and, uh, got to go through the light show as one of the riding on. So you can ride in the horses this year. It's been two years since. You can go out there on your, in your car, or you can do the horses, but I would suggest do the horses. It makes it more nice. Uh, sixteenth, we had our budget, and then we just had our impact meeting that, uh, that, uh, Counselor Dylan Bressi was talking about. It was one of those fun-filled two hours that, uh, it's one of those meetings that when you walk out of it, you say, man, we accomplished a lot, so that was a good thing. Uh, we also had the Maytee flag raising that particular day. And, uh, on the seventeenth, we started off with the Salvation Army Kettle kickoff at Perry Mall, and, uh, I think there was some Star Wars folks there as well, so it was a good start. And if you don't have cash, you can tap your money into the, the amount that you want to donate, which is really good for a guy like me, because I don't usually have change, because I usually got grandchildren, and they can sense that. And so it's, and they don't know about the debit card too much right now, so I'm good with that. Uh, on the eighteenth, uh, we had budget, and then after that night, we had a celebration of Angie's career. And, uh, and man, that was an emotional day for everybody there. The place was packed, lots of her relatives and, uh, lots of great speeches, and, uh, I've known Angie for a great number of years, and she was overwhelmed many times. The next day, we attended with, uh, Counselor Thiessen, uh, the DiValdi Celebration out at, uh, Five Mile Hall with the East Indian Cultural Association. And, uh, a couple of days later, we ended up going, I ended up being invited to the RCMP Town Hall and, uh, listened to what they had to say. Lots of people showed up, and, uh, we had a good question and answer period, and that was put on by the RCMP. We also attended the Warehouser Mill, went through a site visit and a helicopter tour, And it really opened my eyes, the size of the caribou range with those trees that are ready to harvest. And there's so much potential. If there was a fire out there, we'd lose it all. So I'm, I think that there needs to be some stuff opened up out there, otherwise we're going to lose it. On the 23rd, I attended the 22nd Annual Greenview Industrial Presentation by the MD of Greenview. And very positive thoughts going out with lots of potential. We could see billions of dollars being invested in this region. And I said that billion, not million, billions of dollars. I also, we met with Myers Norris and Penny over some stuff, accessibility advisory committee. And another one that I was quite excited about going to was the Grand Prairie Composit High School Visioning for the Future. And it was really well attended. I'm trying to think Grant was there and Mike O'Connor was at councillor O'Connor and councillor Berg. And it was, it's a different school than it was, you know, 20 years ago. There's lots of things that they're incorporating into the future and things that we never even thought about. So I'm looking forward to seeing what that happens. On Friday, I had a group of homeschool kids come through and they wanted to do the chamber visit. And we had a mock presentation. They were going to put a project in town and we had people voting for it and against it and arguing. And they didn't realize that that took place in this chamber and they got to really sit in these chairs. And I told every person that sat, you gotta be like Mike or you gotta be like Chris and you gotta be like Dylan. So this is how you have to have your attitude. And, and, and it was, it was really funny. There was kids from four years of age to people in grade nine. And we got them all to work together. And the original fight was to vote for this and it didn't go through. So I walked over, I says, you just changed one word. Try it again. And so it was, do we have the two football fields beside each other or did you want to put one on the other side? So that when we did it for the two, they didn't want that everything on the south side. They wanted one on the north side. So they changed it and then it went through. So just letting you know how the kids felt. Mind you, they're four years old, so keep that in mind. I also attended Preferred Oil Field Ribbon Cutting. They're in a new shop. And I also went out to Edmonton to the QE2 Platinum Jubilee Metal Presentation yesterday. There'll be more to that come up in the future. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Councillor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Congratulations on that award. So I guess council overall did a lot of the same stuff, considering we did budget for a week and then the week after, we still, we worked together quite a bit. So I won't go over what pretty much has gone over already. I, I think I am the festive councillor right now because we're going to, we're going to talk about Vegas night. That was fantastic in the core. It was fantastic to see so many people out again, you know, going out for dinner, going shopping, just taking in the Christmas season. So a really nice night. We were lucky that it wasn't too cold and it certainly wasn't windy, which is the biggest drawback to, to walking in Grand Prairie, for me anyway. Next, I was able to go to the Festival of Trees Gala and, and an additional event. So in support of our very special hospital foundation that again, I think there was somewhere around 600 people. Oh my.
Keep going Wendy, we're on, we're on a good path here for getting done.
Festival of Trees was fantastic. We all enjoyed ourselves and probably one of my favorite events in the year, totally one of my favorite events in the year. So they, they did raise enough, raise a similar, very similar amount of money as they did last year. So that was great to see. Next, Mayor Clayton and myself attended the Christmas dinner for our new Ukrainian residents through our Rotary Club. So that was really nice evening so that we could bring in Christmas and Santa and the sleigh ride for, for our new visitors. After that was, see, I'm still talking about festive. You can put all the little chatskys.
You're still talking all right.
Festive. Next was the tree lighting, the annual tree lighting and hockey game, which ensued after the annual tree lighting with the firefighters and RCMP, all in the name of charity. Firefighters won nine to three. Our RCMP are going to have to try a little harder next year, but I'm sure they will. They'll start practicing. And so the tree lighting was fantastic. We had our special visitors, the Grinch and the Elf, and of course, Santa, the main attraction. So thank you. Santa still outdoes you. So yeah, it was awesome to see people in, in real life, as it sounds, you know, outside of our characters. But so many people out, even though it was colder, it's great to see faces and hear children. And we had a fantastic choir that came and sang and then some sled dogs with a sled dog troop. So all in all, festive, I'll say it again, since I don't have any props around me. And just a reminder, please give to the Salvation Army Kettle Campaign. That's it.
All right. Councillor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton and to Santa O'Toole. I appreciate your likeness here. Thank you so much. So one committee to update you on, Grand Prairie Regional Tourism, somewhat of a fundamental shift and the travel Alberta is now doing with Grand Prairie Regional Tourism. And so as part of an expanded mandate, there's going to be the shift to the supply side of tourism. That means bolstering the number and diversity of visitor experiences in addition to marketing. Primarily, it's been a marketing organization through Grand Prairie Regional Tourism. They're now going to help develop tourism destinations and tourism partners. The goal is to grow Alberta's tourism industry by $20 billion by 2035. So you'll be seeing engagement sessions coming up around businesses, communities and Indigenous stakeholders. So watch for those. Again, I did a laundry list of things outside of budget that we've all been covering, Christmas Tree Light Up, RCMP Town Hall at the Design Work Centre last Thursday was very informative. The visioning at the open house at the comp was a terrific event. I left my cheat sheet with councillor O'Connor. So if he said anything that sounded intelligent, that was for me. And Festival of Trees Gala was always fun and it was great to see the Métis flag raising during our budget talks. So short and sweet for me. Now I'll let Mike get his retort in.
Councillor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, and thank you, Mr. Berg for that. I did give all your answers and anyway, let's just leave it to that. Went to all the things that were mentioned before, keep it short, met with Peace Library System. We had our board meeting on Saturday and from representatives of 43 communities, it was a packed room. And one of the biggest things that's affecting our, our budget, of course, is fuel costs as we travel throughout the peace, delivering books and, and gas, travel costs, and the price of energy has really affected our budget. So we'll be coming to knock and at some point in time to say, we need help. We're also sending letters to the government, to our funding formula from, are based on 2015 numbers and we need them to be on 2021 numbers. So hopefully they'll hear us and change the formula. But that's my report. Merry Christmas and thank you. You are festive.
Councillor Blackmore.
I don't say Merry Christmas till December 1st, just so you know. Well, I took a break from budget for about an hour and attended a Grand Prairie Airport Commission meeting. That would be about the time that everyone was outside raising the Métis flag. So I apologize for missing that event, but was interested in what was happening at the airport. I also attended the Angie Creer Retirement from the Board of our local Métis Association. And I wanted to talk about that specifically, even though Mayor Clayton hates it when I say, I remember when. But when I first was elected to council in 2001 is when I first met Angie. And she was raising awareness and funds to build the elders caring shelter. And I didn't necessarily agree with everything that was coming forward. And she said, well, I have a plan, like we can agree on these certain things, right? And I said, well, what are they? She said, point A, okay, we agreed on that. Point B, we agreed on that. And then she said, point F, we agreed on that. And she said, great, we're in agreement. It's like, wait a minute. But Grand Prairie did build the first elders caring shelter in Canada. So congratulations to Angie. I know she's, she's retired from only one small part of her very, very busy volunteer activities. So she's not really retired. I did enjoy the helicopter tour of Warehouses, Hauser's Forest Management Area. We only saw a very small part of that, but there is an amazing amount of activity on the non-caribou side and then no activity on the caribou side. So that's an interesting thing. And as mentioned, a forest fire waiting to happen. I also attended the Northwest Polytechnic Campus Master Planning Stakeholder Engagement Session that they held with a few members of council. It's interesting to see that while they have a plan about where they're going academically, now they need to figure out how to manage the actual physical space that they have, which has been changing significantly over the years as programs develop and then disappear or with the nursing and medical services portion of their student delivery moving across the street to the hospital. And finally, on Friday, I attended the South Peace Regional Archives Strategic Planning Session, which took place all day. The South Peace Regional Archives is in the process of moving from the back of the museum into the bottom of Centre 2000, into the previous heritage space that belonged to the museum down there. And then the museum will take over their space at the museum site. So we were developing a plan for a five, a five-year plan from 2003 to 2000, 2023 to 2027. And there's a lot of work that goes into that and the South Peace Regional Archives is primarily volunteer-driven. And they look forward to having your donations of any kind. It's not just for special people in the community, but it belongs to all of us. I did attend the Christmas tree lighting and would like to say thank you to Hammerhead Energy for supplying the cookies, which were absolutely delicious. And my partner, Mike, and I poured, I don't know, a million cups, I felt like of hot chocolate and put lids on them in the freezing cold. They were certainly, I don't really, I never really got a chance to look up and see who I was giving chocolate to. It was just process. And one final thing, the Northern Light Show. Right now, they're running Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I think, and they don't move until all, till seven days a week until December 8th. So if you're not able to go out there on the weekend, wait a few days and you'll be able to go on December 8th and anytime after that. And they will have both driving and the heavy horse team every night at that point in time. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for that. Councillor Thiessen.
I see councillor Bosch saying, I'm still festive, I'm still, I got Mandarin oranges, a Christmas tree in Gandhi in front of me. There's, thanks Kevin O'Toole. Anyways, I'll, I'll go right through and most of the events I attended with council throughout the past couple of weeks, but I will update you on my external committees. Just last week on November 24th, we had a meeting at the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance in Grand Cache, Alberta. Some of the orders of business that we had that might interest members of council is that we had a big discussion on the W-PAC governance document that came our way. This is something that administration with the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance has been working with, with administrations and other W-PACs around the province on how we can work together on projects where the waters touch, where we're not infringing upon the others' policies, bylaws and how they do their business. So that was a good discussion. We sent it back to the working group to, to fish out any of the details that we thought might need a bit more unpacking. We also received a presentation from Mr. Nate Medinski. He's an aquatic habitat coordinator doing a fish study in the Assanauqui-Winuaq Nation, which is the First Nations group that lives in the Grand Cache area. He was studying the fish in the area, their health, their spawning patterns, migration routes and any impediments to their ability to survive in the watershed, based off of industry or otherwise. So very fascinating presentation. Then we also had a tour of the Victor Lake Pump House and the Grand Cache Water Treatment Plant as well. And we toured a wetland area that was created to, to create a buffer between Victor Lake and to ensure that their source water is protected. So a good example of how we can use nature to mitigate the impacts of us on the landscape. Then on November 25th, we had a meeting at the Grand Spirit Foundation. I was unfortunately unable to attend as I was in a meeting with ASHA, Alberta Seniors and Community Housing Association of Alberta, which is, it touches into Grand Spirit and I'm there on their behalf. But I did phone in for the organizational meeting where we re-elected councillor Judy Kokatio Beckerus to the Chair of the Board, as well as Reeve Alvin Hubert to Vice Chair on that. So that was my portion of it, but I'm just keeping you guys in the loop in case you're looking at who's doing the moving and the shaking with the Grand Spirit Foundation. So yeah, so there's lots of really good stuff. I also want to talk about Angie Creer's retirement celebration. Angie's been a dear friend of mine for, well, over a decade now. And it's great to see how one person can impact the livelihood and the wellbeing of an entire community. Angie has certainly done that and inspired probably hundreds of thousands of people across this country, especially with her recent visit to the Pope. It was especially touching. I didn't expect to, I went to, I went there expecting to smile and hug a bunch of people and have a good time. I didn't expect to cry at the table like a little weeping baby, but it was a very emotional tribute and presentation by MP Chris Workington in giving Angie an award that he had nominated her for, which is the Queen's Diamond Jubilation Award, one that our very own councillor Kevin O'Toole alluded to earlier, as well did councillor Bosch. But congratulations, Kevin O'Toole, on years of service in the community, your heart and your willingness to participate in everything that is Grand Prairie and give us a good name. It's the reason why you won that award and why you're nominated, similar in the same vein to Angie Creer. So it was really nice to see. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the Christmas tree lighting. I had, was otherwise engaged, but I did manage to make it to the Battle of the Badges to cheer on our fire department and wear their colors. I was happy when, when my home team won by a score of nine to three, like really putting the RCMP through the wringer there on, on skates. And finally, there's one more thing I want to talk about. Yeah, the Christmas tree lighting. Nope, sorry. Yeah, the Northern Spirit Light Show. I, I want to talk about that because this is an event that not only is for families and people who enjoy going out and checking out the beautiful light displays, but lots of not-for-profits have put in their hard work and time to ensure that those displays are beautiful. These are businesses, these are not-for-profits, these are people ensuring that everyone's feeling festive at Christmas time. The reason why I did want to mention it though, is you know, I got on one of the sleigh rides that was a bit underpopulated. We'll say there's about eight people on there and when I got off, I think I helped two little ladies and my girlfriend off the sleigh. And then we walked over to my car, we got in, we drove around the building and we had to wait for this sleigh that was unloading tons of people. And would you know it, councillor Kevin O'Toole was standing at the bottom at the back of that sleigh, helping every single person off that sleigh. And I didn't mind moving, I just wanted to watch Kevin like take everybody's hand and escort them down. It was quite the thing. So thanks for being such a gentleman too. You are probably the most festive councillor on our council, Mr. Santa O'Toole. And finally, there you go. See, look, he's still giving. Finally, this week, not events that we've done, but events that I'm sure we're all going to take part in. December 2nd is International Day for Persons with Disabilities. I know many members of council are going to be there to celebrate the great accomplishments of people who, maybe some people said they couldn't do things because of how they are, but we know that these are probably some of the most giving and loving people in our community. So I'm excited to celebrate their day with them and to hear all the great accomplishments that have been achieved over the past year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. I don't have a lot to add. I did attend a online call with councillor Blackmore and councillor Berg with the Peace, Peace Health Advisory Council. It was a good conversation on attraction and retention. Mentioned that I had the, the honour of reading the proclamation for Louis Rial Day, as well as kicking off the Salvation Army Kettle Campaign. One thing I did that I know wasn't mentioned tonight is the opportunity to meet up with the 2025 Special Olympics Summer Games bid tour. It was in between other council activities, so I met up with them in between some of their stops at a couple of our facilities. And fingers are crossed, we'll hear in the new year whether or not we are the successful community to receive the Special Olympics Summer Games in 2025. But I can tell you from the brief conversation I had with the bid committee, they were thoroughly impressed with what they had seen in our facilities, which to us is really no surprise. I had the opportunity to have lunch with Susan Smith from AHS and, and support her in a reg- and and support her in a recruitment initiative for a the recruitment of an additional pediatrician. So I'm optimistic that that went well, and he will settle in Grand Prairie within the next few months. Also visited the grade four, fives, and sixes at Parkside Montessori School, where we talked about local government, provincial government, federal government. And it was a great, a great afternoon to be back in that school, because I hadn't been there many years. The Angie Creer Retirement was definitely a great special evening. I wanted to say, as always, thank you to Angie for everything you've done, for everything you continue to do. But also, congratulations and thank you to Shannon Dunfield, who is taking the new role as President of the Métis Association, after many years of working alongside of Angie. It's great to see Shannon now in that role. I had the opportunity to visit many downtown businesses at Vegas night. It was a great evening. I wanted to mention thank you to councillor Bosch, or thank you to the Downtown Association manager for getting music downtown. If you haven't been downtown in the last couple of days, there's music playing off the Talus Building, and you literally can hear it everywhere. It's awesome. So good job on that. And thanks to the Downtown Association for for doing that. Attended the Festival of Trees. Not only the gala, I went out there on Friday afternoon with my kids, who are teenagers now. And I remember the days when they were three and five, and we'd go out there. And this time was interesting, because they barely wanted to be there, but I forced them, and it was lots of fun. But also attended many of the other items that were identified, as well as the Gateway Industrial, Greenview Industrial Gateway Update, and the Intermunicipal Collaboration Committee, and the Grand Prairie Campus Master Plan, and the Rotary Ukrainian Dinner. Last but not least, I wanted to say a huge thank you to all those involved with the tree lighting celebration yesterday, the Bonnet's Energy Event Team, as well as other departments from our from our organization. It was a great event, albeit a little cold. Everything went off without a hitch. The trees started. Thank you to the Downtown Association for supporting that initiative, as well as Hammerhead Resources. They were there. Not only did they financially support, they were there with staff helping. And I tell you, councillor O'Connor, Berg, and councillor Blackmore, definitely fingers were frozen in hot chocolate. But thanks for all the hard work that was done there. And also attended the Battle of the Badges. It was a great opportunity. I got to drop the puck with Sparky and a gentleman in red serge. And it was it really, it was a good game until the beginning of the third period. But it was a much improved game over last year. So I think it was a lot of fun. And there was over 1,200 attendees. So it was a great turnout and a great event. And I know they raised good money for the 3D charity. So with that, I will call the meeting adjourned, and thank everyone for their time. See you soon.